Okay, I'd like to call the September eighth, two thousand and twenty-five Peachtree City Planet Commission Meeting to Order. Everyone in attendance would please stand and join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Okay, do we have any announcements this evening?
No announcements, sir.
Okay, any presentations? I know we do have a presentation, but we're going to do something to, as we get to that point in the, in the agenda.
May I ask a request for the agenda change for that? Is it possible to move that item as the first item?
Absolutely, under the old agenda items?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we can do that. Do we want to carry that under Agenda Changes then? We have two items, I guess, under Agenda Changes. So let's go ahead. Do we have, do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
Okay, so we have, goodness, and my mind just went blank. I apologize. Name, I'm sorry.
Bob Warner.
Bob, thank you. My mind just totally went blank. I apologize. I was talking to Bob just a little bit ago and completely forgot his name. So we need to have a motion to go ahead and move Bob's presentation under the text amendment for the vegetation and protection and landscape requirements to the first item under the old agenda items, so that he's not here all evening with us. Do we have a motion for that?
So moved?
Well, we need a motion.
Okay, move to, I move to move the Consider Text Amendment to Land, what's this, the Land Development Ordinance, Article eleven, Vegetation Protection and Landscape Requirements, to be the first under the Old Agenda Items Section.
Perfect. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to move the Vegetation Protection and Landscape Requirements to the first item under Old Agenda. We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is passed to go ahead and move that to the first item under Old Agenda Items. The second item for Agenda Changes, as you can see, unfortunately, it looks like the two agenda items were combined in this, in this one here. But the comment, public comment period, we at this time are not going to have public comment this evening. There's still some items that need to be taken care of to come up with the requirements and various other details with that. That has not happened as of this time. So stay tuned for that on, on future meetings for the public comment. But as of this evening, we're not going to have that. So approval of minutes, everyone's had an opportunity to go ahead and review the minutes from the last meeting. Any comments, changes to that? Okay, with none, like a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting as written.
Second.
We have a second, we have approval in a second. Any other discussion? As such, all those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes approved as submitted. And unfortunately, I don't have the date in front of me.
For the minutes?
Yeah, August twenty-fifth, thank you. So those were the August twenty-fifth meeting minutes. Okay, so we're into Old Agenda Items, and as we so moved, we are going to go ahead and handle the vegetation first. I'd like to go ahead and turn that over to staff.
Thank you, Sir Chairman. The item before us, as mentioned, is an old item. We previously discussed this item as a city-initiated text amendment or proposed text amendment. It's to address native trees that, of course, are naturally occurring in this specific region or area that we're in for the sake of protecting the climate and environment, and invasive plants are non-native plants, of course, that could cause there to be concerns in regards to the environment, the economy, and human health. So with that, you'll see that in your packet, staff has given two items as attachments. You have Division four, Section eleven-twenty-two, which is an existing language. We have our city arborist here who has suggested that that item be removed from removal of, is it Calery?
Calery.
Calery pear and Bradford pear, thank you. And then, of course, you have proposed language where staff is recommending native and invasive plant ordinance with tables to list out those particular types of plantings. So what I would love to do is to defer the remainder of this discussion over to our arborist.
Excellent, thank you.
Do you guys have any questions? I don't have a presentation, per se. I just, you know, everything that's been put together is very accurate, in line with what other municipalities are doing. Looked at UGA School of Forestry, Georgia Forestry Commission, their lists. So everything we've put together is pretty much.
Pretty much right in line.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, that's really good to hear. I expect there's probably going to be a question on the Calery pear, the removal of that from the, is that what I'm reading is that that's going to be removed from the quote-unquote banned list?
No, that, that is an invasive, that we're gonna, yes, correct.
Okay, so that is being added, or is that?
Added to the invasive.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure. I wasn't sure if that was on there and being removed. Because I know we had a discussion on, on the Bradford pear at, at the last meeting. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to, to the commissioner, I'm sorry, staff, yes?
There's, there's, there's an existing section in the ordinance that talks about vegetation for public property.
Right.
That's the list where the Calery pear is listed as a small tree. And it's being recommended that it be removed from that list.
Okay, perfect.
Then moving, then moving forward, we'll talk about the newly proposed ordinance with native and invasive plant material.
Okay, understand.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does now, yes. So, yeah, we're going to open that up for any discussion. I'm going to start to my right. Commissioner Hamner?
Sure. From your perspective, what advantages do native plants provide over non-native ornamentals in terms of ecology and long-term sustainability?
Oh, well, of course, the natives, you know, they don't spread like the invasives do and take over, you know, the landscape. They're just, the wildlife, natural wildlife in, in the city, they do well with that. Yeah, I mean, it's.
Sure.
So I'd like to, he asked one question, you answered a different question.
Okay.
If I heard you right, he asked about native and non-native.
Okay.
And you mentioned native and invasive. And are we assuming that all non-natives are invasive?
Not necessarily.
Got it. So real quick, just to, thank you for that, by the way. So just to clarify the answer on it, from your perspective, again, what do the advantages that native plants have over non-natives?
They just provide more to the ecosystem.
Right.
Yeah.
Would you agree that native plants generally require less irrigation, fertilizer, and pesticide once established compared to non-natives?
Yes, I do.
Over the long run, do you see native plants, plants as more cost-effective for both the city and private developers in terms of maintenance and replacement?
Absolutely.
How would you, how would adopting a native species list like Athens Clark County has done give staffs clearer standards and make landscaping plans reviews easier to enforce?
As far as the enforcement, I think in here with the enforcement, did it have myself as the enforcement, I believe, right? Or code enforcement? City arborists. So, yeah, I didn't see that. By, by keeping to those standards, you know, with, with everybody else on the same plan that we are going to be on, it'll just be easier to enforce across the board with, with, I hope, with going this route with these, on these, on this list.
Understood. All right, two more questions for you.
Okay.
All right. In terms of nursery supply and availability, are native plants reasonably accessible for developers and landscapers in our region today?
Yes, we have a lot of providers in the area that carry pretty much everything on our list that we can get readily available.
Got it. All right, last question for you. Do you believe prioritizing native plants would get Peachtree City a more unified and distinctive landscape character compared to the generic ornamentals often seen elsewhere?
Yes, I do. I do, absolutely.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Hamner. Commissioner Allen, any questions to staff?
I, I have a concern, and you weren't here for the last time we discussed this.
I saw it.
Did you, okay, so I don't have a green thumb, and I don't have a preference as to what plants go where. And we'll just take invasive out of it. I totally agree, we don't want invasive plants. And as far as non-native plants being purchased, planted, or used by the city, I can totally agree with that piece. But I don't understand what right we would have to stop a private investor, developer, from putting non-natives on their property. The good example is the hotel going up on seventy-four. They have an entirely, I'll, I'll call it eastern motif, Japanese trees and plants. And if it's their, if they're not invasive, and it's their responsibility to maintain them, then what right do we have to say no? And that concerns me. I walked out of the building that night, and a gentleman that, that was pitching the, the development said he didn't like pink shirts. I was wearing a pink shirt. And he said, I think we should stop everybody from wearing pink shirts.
Right.
And I said, do they, you know, do they force other shirts to become pink? And he goes, no. I said, do they damage other pink shirts or kill other pink shirts? He goes, no. I said, then what you're saying is we should let it be where whatever color should they want to wear? And he said, yeah, and I tend to agree with that.
Right.
From a private developer's perspective.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay. Commissioner Criss, any questions? And then we'll get into comments afterwards.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I have a few questions. So it looks like what, what's being proposed here by staff is that we have a, a change to a current ordinance, so Section eleven-twenty-two, we're removing that Calery pear from the current ordinance. And there's a proposal to add a Division six to, let's see, what is that? That's Article, Article eleven, the Vegetation Protection and Landscape Requirements. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, so this was a request by city council for staff to review and give an opportunity to see where it's best placed in the code. And so by having conversations with the, the team that handles development, we found it to be best to be placed in this particular section, creating a Division six. And so that language that you see there would be language that we, we find other municipalities and other areas that have identified native and invasive plants to be identified.
Great, thank you. And so as I read Division six, obviously, there's a purpose section which really doesn't require anything, just kind of gives some background information. There's an enforcement section that allows the city to take action against invasive plants and species when they're found on, on a property within the city limits. There is, I guess, an enforcement ability for the city to pass along costs to the owner of that property when the property owner fails to correct the violation. And then there's just a list of permitted native species. And it does say that the list of species is permitted to be planted, but additional native or non-native species may be proposed. Applicants desiring to use species not listed must provide in writing to the city arborist reasoning why it may be appropriate to use unlisted native or non-native species. So this would, these basically, my question, getting to my question, these are the, the species that need to be in landscape plans going forward. And if, if they're using something that isn't on this list, then they need to provide a reason. Is, is that correct?
That is correct. There was a question that was asked of whether, what happens if these trees are not available?
Yes.
So to prevent that from happening, we give that authority over to the city arborist to decide how to move it further. Otherwise, we prohibit development.
Got it. Okay, so we're basically saying you've got, you've got to have something on this list. Otherwise, there has to be a particularly, particularly good reason or condition on the approval to allow. And there's, there's a list of native species and non-native species. So how, how were, how were these lists developed, is, is the next question I have?
So these lists were from municipalities that had already generated their list, so.
In the local area here?
Yes, sir. They will be local. The city arborist, are we calling you the right title? Yes, the urban forestry manager, took some, some time to review the list just to ensure that their listing from their research was accurate, and he found it to be so.
Okay, and in your professional opinion, are there, is there anything missing? Is there anything additional that you would consider adding to these lists based upon your review of these other, other local ordinances?
After reviewing, I did not see any others that just jumped out to me that needed to be added at this time.
Okay. Great, great. Okay, so that, that's all my questions for now.
Sure? Yeah. Well, and I was going to ask a, a question to you.
Yeah.
If, if, and maybe this is where your, your questioning was going, so are you looking at, and I'll use Commissioner Allen's case of, of the hotel. You know, even though they, they did not, or would not meet the requirements of, of this text amendment if it was in place at the time, through their landscape plan, they would be able to go ahead and request the use of other species that would then be reviewed by, by staff for, you know, is it, is it invasive, you know, sort of yes and no? You know, is it more just an ornamental in a specific area, kind of yes and no? Is it going, is that, is that kind of what you were?
Yeah, I mean.
Thinking in, in your questioning?
Yeah, so I'm trying to figure out, you know, what, what is it that we're really requiring here in these, in these text amendments, right? And so when I, when I look at these lists, you know, it looks like we're trying to promote certain native and non-native species. Well, we're, we're looking to promote native and non-native species. What, what we have listed here, so I think I misspoke actually, because it says a table of prohibited non-native invasive species is there. Okay, and then we have a table.
There's the permitted native and then the.
Okay, permitted native.
Permitted and prohibited, yes.
Permitted, native, and, and prohibited, non-native, but we don't provide a list of permitted non-native. But you are able to apply, is, is what you're trying to say.
Yes.
You're able to, to submit a landscape plan with a reasoning for why. Yeah, so, so I think, I think from my perspective, where, where we've been going as a commission over time is that we're trying to encourage applicants to use native species because of their benefits. And I, I think it's fine that we're going to say, if you come to us with something different than native species, as long as you have a reason to do so, we, you know, and staff doesn't have a problem with it, that's fine. I don't, I don't see much here providing an incentive, right, to, to applicants, you know? So, so one of the things that I had mentioned in our meeting last time we spoke about all of this was that it would be nice to see maybe if someone has more than fifty percent of their landscape plan as native species that they, if they'd have a, they don't meet our canopy tree requirements, maybe they, the, the amount that they have to contribute to the tree fund would be reduced. And so that then would provide an incentive to applicants trying, for us to say as a city, we value native species. Now, that being said, there's nothing stopping the applicant from coming to us with non-native, non-invasive species. They can still do so, and for the right reasons, would be happy to approve it. But without an incentive, all we're doing is we're saying, bring anything forward, just not these things. And, and to me, that's fine, if that's what we decide as a group, that's what we want. But I'd love to see something that incentivizes the use of the native species because of the benefits that Commissioner Hamner just represented his line of questioning.
That's, that's a good point.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely. Commissioner Helverson, any questions?
I have a question and a concern. So like, my question goes to Bob. Last time we got together, one of the applicants was for the hotel, was positioning the fact that they were saying that it was a hardship that they couldn't get the native species, they weren't available. That's the same reaction I thought you'd have.
Yeah.
Because your statement you just made earlier was that they're readily available and everybody's got them. And the reason for their justification for what they were doing was that, well, we can't get them, so this is all we can get. And if you're going to force us to get native species, and it's going to be a hardship, we're going to have to pay a lot of money trying to import these things in, or whatever their case was. So I just wanted to clarify that you said that the native species are indeed readily available, and we're not necessarily putting a restriction in place that would make it much more difficult to actually achieve what we're trying to achieve.
Correct. There are so, I don't know if you guys, well, you surely, you know about Moon Valley. We have Pike, we have Stovall, we have Central Turf, we have Site One that sell landscape supplies and, and our nurseries around the area, so there's, and that's just here in Fayette County. Yeah, I don't know where they got that from, but they all sell a lot of native trees and shrubbery.
Okay, I'm just confirming that. I just want to confirm what you said and, and be more comfortable with the direction we're headed. Because if we were trying to establish a criteria that was unachievable, then there would be no point in doing that. All right. The concern I have has to do with the enforcement of the native and invasive species. And the concern I have is the line that says, let me see if I can find it. "In the event a property owner fails to correct a notice of violation within the time specified, the city, as appropriate, may enter the property and remove and abate the invasive species or trees." That seems a little aggressive to me versus, I would propose you hit them in the wallet and have just an escalation of fees, which is going to force them financially to remove it themselves. So rather than go on someone's property with a, you know, and tear everything up and just to take out some tree that's in the back corner, who knows what the situation might be? That it's identified, they're notified, then they're fined, and then the fines escalate to the point where, I'm not sure where that would go, but that would be my thought.
And just a, a comment on that, that's pretty standard language in, in HOAs. You know, from an ACC, Architectural Control standpoint, is, is enforcement, is that it's, if it's out of compliance, if the property owner is notified and does not, they do have the allowance with that to go and rectify the situation and at the cost of the homeowner, so it, it's fairly standard.
Gotcha. It just seemed a little.
It, it is, but it's, it's, yeah.
Gotcha. Okay. Thanks, Scott.
Sure. Any other questions or comments?
No, sir.
Yes. So for the urban forestry manager?
Yes.
And staff, so in a case similar to the hotel where they want to have this Oriental Garden motif, and they bring it to staff, and it's not on the list, and none of it's invasive, what would be your response to approving or disapproving it, and why?
I, I mean, I would, I would get with staff, myself and staff get together, and then just go over, you know, what, what their plan consists of, how many non-natives, where they were going to be planted, things of that sort, and then either approve or disapprove on that, you know? The amount, the quantity, where they're going to be planted.
I mean, we're making, I would make the assumption that it's all on their property. And if we have a canopy coverage that's required, I support that.
Right.
But I just don't, I don't want to see us go down a road where we're making arbitrary decisions because we just don't like it.
Right.
I understand the concerns. I, I love the village setting. I'd hate to see a skyrise, you know, a skyscraper come in the middle of town, and there's probably good reasons why it shouldn't be there, but I would still think we'd have to have some sort of reason to prevent it. And same thing with this planting. I, I just hate for us to go down a road I just hate for us to go down a road that leads to further and further arbitrary decisions. I do understand the concerns. I read your email. I understand it entirely and don't agree with, I agree with most of it. I just am looking at a systemic answer.
Is it possible that, or shall I say, I think the best way of doing that is we research the type of trees or planting they're looking to install. We do a little history to see what the lifespan is and what the challenges may be with it. We also researched to determine from the list of what we would allow, what's close to that, that is, is close in lifestyle, whether it be the planting, the, I guess, the environment, how it would work well with others, and see if there's an item on that list that mirrors that as close as possible. So I guess it would just have to, it depends on that particular situation. You know, I mean, he mentioned the location. I think he's more so saying the location on that property.
Correct. In regards to buildings, facilities, infrastructure, utility poles, lines.
Okay. Again, I'm just, I'm just trying to prevent the arbitrary no. Not this particular case, I'm just looking at all future cases.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I have some comments.
Sure.
Sure. So first, I just wanna begin by thanking everyone in the work that's been done on this. And obviously, we've been talking about this as a planning commission for some time as well. Adding a list of invasive species that would no longer be permitted in development projects is a really meaningful first step for us on this. But I do wanna urge us to continue to go further on this. "We have an opportunity not just to eliminate harmful invasives, but to actively promote native plants as a foundation for Peachtree City's future landscapes. Our land development ordinance already points us in this direction. Section 1101 is clear. We are tasked with protecting the ecological balance of our community, preserving a unique and attractive community identity, encouraging the use of native and drought-tolerant plant material. These principles are already in our code. But without a native plant list or enforceable standards, this remains aspirational at best. By adopting a native plant list alongside the invasive ban, we'll make those goals real. Native plants just aren't not just a landscaping choice, they are critical infrastructure for our natural systems that provide essential food and shelter for birds, butterflies, and pollinators that ornamental trees cannot support. The U.S. Forest Service has documented more than 90% of terrestrial birds rely on insects tied to native plants for survival. Natives also require less irrigation, fewer chemicals, and help stabilize soil, protecting our floodplains and streams, exactly what Article 11, which we're talking about tonight, calls us to do in sections on floodplain and stream bank protection. These species are naturally resistant, thriving through droughts, storms, and climate shifts where many non-native ornamentals fail. This means we're building a landscape that doesn't just survive, but sustains itself. Choosing native species isn't just environmentally smart, it's also fiscally responsible. Native plants need less water, fertilizer, and pesticide once established, as we clearly established this evening. They reduce the long-term maintenance burden on both private developers and the city itself. They live longer, fail less often, and reduce costly replacements. Every native we plant today is an investment lowering tomorrow's costs for irrigation, chemicals, and maintenance. This is also about what kind of city we want within Peachtree City to look like. Landscape architect Warren Elway, who's local here, said it best, "Having a native species list will create a more unified, attractive appearance across our city and make staff approvals easier," which we were just talking about. Imagine the difference on this. Instead of plants that are bland, destructive, and common across the southeast, we can showcase river birches, service berries, native hollies, and Georgia oaks. These are plants that rid our community in place, plants that make Peachtree City recognizable and distinctive, plants that reflect our identity as a city that values its natural beauty. I also wanna acknowledge that the concern about the flexibility, which I know that we talked about a lot with the hotel, we don't need to be rigid to make this work. Staff discretion can allow substitutions if a native plant isn't available or if a special ornamental plant is justified, such as a cultural exchange or specimen gardens on city property. Enforcement cannot be focused, enforcement can be focused where it matters most, on commercial developments and public property where landscape plans are already required and reviewed as practical. This way, we strike a balance. We push towards native plants, but we remain pragmatic about the availability in special cases. The support for this amendment is broad and deep. I've been a supporter who's followed in the footsteps of former Commissioner Ray Liotta. Our urban forestry program manager just supported the native list for consistency and simplicity. In residents across Peachtree City, overwhelmingly want to see invasives gone and our landscapes reflect the natural environment. This is a policy change that, with both expert and community backing. But in closing, I ask us to strengthen this amendment that does three things. One, prohibit invasive species on all native plans, on all landscape plans. Two, adapt a native species list for Peachtree City modeled on the Athens Clark model and adapted with staff expertise. And three, require native plants wherever feasible in commercial and public landscapes. This is about more than just banning harmful plants. It's about choosing the landscapes of the future, landscapes that are resilient, sustainable, and distinctly Peachtree City.
Thank you, Commissioner Hamner. I, so I guess I would look at it from a standpoint, and I agree with, I have to say, I agree with your points that you have. And I understand the concern and, you know, we, I would like to see us give developers, landscapers, an option to go ahead and submit, as you said, from the standpoint of, is it a specialty plant in one location? My concern is more so, you know, are we looking at mass plantings of, you know, non-native? If it's one weeping, you know, Japanese cherry right at the front entrance, you know, is that something that staff can take a look at and say, yes, that's acceptable? But we don't want 20 planted along the retention pond because that's not a requirement or that's not permitted. So I think we do need to have that allowance in there. You know, I don't think we have the language right now in the text amendment to cover such an item. So I think we would go ahead and have to either mark something up or send it back to staff with our recommendations and have it updated. You know, we have that capability this evening to go ahead and do that, is to provide a red line with recommendations. Is that something that we would wanna go ahead and do?
Sure.
Okay. Guess I'm gonna look, Commissioner Hamner, from your standpoint. Is that something you have based upon the information you provided that you could add to or provide the commissioners and add to the text amendment?
Yes.
Provide back to staff?
Yes.
Okay.
So are we gonna table this then and wait to tell city council to consider this? Because what we're doing today, if I'm not mistaken, staff, is that we're recommending that city council consider this text amendment. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Your last meeting, you mentioned that you were ready to move items to council. So this staff report, each of the three that you're hearing tonight is ready for council, based on your recommendation, based on your edits and so forth. If you feel that there is more redlining necessary, you can postpone it to your next meeting, your choice.
So we could postpone it, or we could, we could recommend that they consider it and add a few, not conditions, but, you know, additional recommendations so that we don't necessarily hold this up, but, you know, we're not in any particular rush.
Right. I, I would like to go ahead and probably postpone it, to go ahead and get those changes in and have the best document we could provide to council, you know, with the input from the commissioners. Is that something that would be acceptable to the commissioners?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, before we move on, though, I do wanna mention a couple of things. So Section 1135, which is a new section, it talks about invasive plant or tree species as defined by this chapter. It's not, invasive plants or trees, that isn't included in the definitions. Section 1102 of the, of Article 11, so at least I don't see it. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm missing it.
I'm sorry, sir. What section are you reading from?
So 1135, which is one of the new sections under Division 6. It says whether an invasive plant or tree species as defined by this chapter. I'm guessing that, that, that section reference is probably pointing down towards 1137, which has the list. If that's the case, I would say C, 1137.
Call out the specific section.
Because there is no definitions in the definitions section of this particular article.
Yeah. I think it was more so saying by direction, like it's directing you to that table. I don't think it meant defined.
Okay, so then, yeah, I would then put C, you know, C section, or as in Section 1137. So it's very clear what we mean there. But yeah, I mean, besides that, you know, I would just like to comment that I agree with Commissioner Allen's concerns. I think that we should be flexible. We should allow folks to come to us with an idea of how they want their property to be and not penalize them. But I do think that there should be something that incentivizes folks that don't necessarily care to use the native species. So that's my stance and I'm looking forward to the additional edits.
And I guess that's a very good, good point. You did bring it up about, you know, incentives. Is that something that we would wanna consider? Is that something that can be considered? Yeah, I agree. Just gives a little bit more, you know, kind of push to go ahead and have them actually use native plants.
We've seen a lot of landscape plans, right? I mean, that's one of the main things that we do on the planning commission. And, yeah, I think, I think a lot of folks, they're just wanting it to look nice. They don't necessarily have a vision. You know, I think that this hotel that came the last time we met, that was a vision, right? They had a particular style and design they were looking for. Hey, that's, as long as it doesn't have invasive species, cool, you know? But if they don't have that vision that requires the non-natives, let's try to incentivize them to use the native species. There's benefits there.
And I agree. I think, you know, most go out and they choose, you know, nice-looking selections. A lot of it's ease of maintenance, you know, from that standpoint, readily available, you know? I would say to the most part, you know, not inexpensive, but not costly. But I think there, I think there needs to be something, you know? And like you said, you know, the hotel was a unique proposal. It really was, you know? I don't think we've really seen anything like that that I can kind of recall, you know, that had certain, certain plant material that they actually called out. You know, we usually see kind of the same typical stuff that we do see in commercial developments. You know, I know some time ago, you know, everyone had whole banks of, you know, variegated lirpy to the point where it was overboard, you know? And that's kind of been pulled back and it's only in specific areas where they may put that, but that was the biggest thing for a long time. So I do think we need some bounds on it, definitely from the invasive, you know? That is absolute that we do not wanna see and what we don't wanna permit. But from the non-native and native, I do think we need to give a little bit of, you know, I wouldn't say leeway, but a little bit of opportunity for developers to come in and say, this is, this is what we like to propose, and this is why we wanna go ahead and propose it.
Sure. I think we should really define that, though.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with that. So from that standpoint, it looks like we have a little bit more work to do. I guess the staff-
I have a question for Bob while he's here. I noticed the sweet gum is on the native list. Would you not consider that invasive?
I would. Every time I step on one.
They're invasive in my property, I know that.
I mean, I know our, our list says non-native invasive.
Right.
But maybe we just eliminate it from the native list so people don't think, oh, yeah, let's plant a bunch more sweet gums.
People usually don't do that.
I know.
But, you know, yeah, I mean, there are nuisances.
I mean, they're all over. I mean, you know, they are, like you said, they're a native. But we really want to have people planting them. You know, it's almost like a Bradford pear, you know? Do we want people planting Bradford pears? Probably not. I mean, is that something from that standpoint?
Just to perhaps remove from the-
Yeah, yeah, I would agree with that.
Commissioner Hamner, your thoughts on sweet gums?
My bare feet don't like them very much.
No.
I do know.
Yep.
I think that's a, I think that's a yes, you know, from the commissioners. We would like to go ahead and have that, this sweet gum removed. Thank you, Steph. That's a, it's a good recommendation. So as I was going from that standpoint, and I'll kind of look at staff, what would be the best way to go ahead and get you that information? Is it something we could go ahead and redline and send it to you and have it updated then?
So I will say this for each of the three items. So staff has given you language that we have either researched or drafted for the sake of your consideration. That means it could be completely washed away with a totally different item, totally different language. So if you wish to redline it and send it back to us prior to the staff report being submitted over to you, yes, that would be grand. Again, we're just here for the sake of research and background language, you know? With you being the recommending body, of course, we just, we trust that whatever you give us to us is what we move forward to council.
Okay. So with that, I think we need to go ahead and have a motion to recommend that this text amendment be postponed until the next planning commission meeting, which would be 25th?
Second.
I'm sorry, 22nd, okay. Which would be the 22nd. And that the commission would provide staff with redlines of the current text amendment with the changes, recommendations we would like to see added.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
Being that there are five individuals, there could be five separate redlines. So I'm just wanting to understand, is how you, would that be something you all collectively agree upon to bring back to staff? Is that something we need to bring back as five separate redlines and then discuss it over? Just curious as to how that would work.
That's a good point.
I'm okay with agreeing, all of us, that one person goes and makes the redlines and then we can discuss the redlines together at that next meeting. As long as we all agree upon who that person is, I guess.
Can we discuss it ahead of time?
We discuss it, yeah, well, yeah.
In other words, yeah, exactly.
Well, we can't, certain things we can't discuss over email because they open meetings.
No, we're not able to do that.
It'd be a lot easier just to assign, I think, assign one person to take our comments today into consideration to make redlines, and then we discuss them and make changes in the next meeting.
If we were to do this, I know we just said no email, but if we were to do this over email, but also still include the planning commission email address on that, so that way there's a record within the city servers, would that work?
That would then open you up to having your personal information, as we've previously discussed via email. So I would recommend not to do that. I would recommend that if you have comments that you would like to send to staff, of course, we can attach that in our staff reports, but I understand where you're trying to go with that.
Sure.
It kind of opens it up a little differently, because I would have to put that packet inside of here.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I would like to make a recommendation or suggestion. You wrote, your comments were excellent and, to a certain extent, swayed me.
Okay.
I'm hoping something I said sways you. But if you would, if we accept, if you take what you wrote and what you think and incorporate some of our other thoughts on not making arbitrary decisions, I think we could probably take that and work with it at the next meeting.
I can do that. I'd be willing to do that.
Yeah, great.
Cool, thank you.
So I guess the only, I mean, and I agree, what you put together was great. I think the only other thing we may wanna add in is the incentive, you know, to see and that's something that wasn't in your-
We can see what other cities potentially do with it-
Okay.
-and go from there.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea, yeah.
Cool.
Perfect, okay.
So I move to postpone the consideration of a text amendment to the land development ordinance, Article 11 Vegetation Protection and Landscape Requirements to the September 22nd Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
I think we need to say to incorporate-
To incorporate changes to be provided by Commissioner Hamner and to be further discussed at that meeting.
Perfect. I think that covers everything.
Okay, second.
Okay, so we have a motion to postpone with the language that Commissioner Criss, and we have a second. Any other discussion, comments, no? Okay, all those in favor postponing to the September 22nd Planning Commission meeting signify by saying aye?
Aye.
This text amendment is then postponed until the September 22nd to incorporate the changes, recommendations being compiled by Commissioner Hamner.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Excellent.
Thank you, guys.
Can we make Bob's?
Thank you for coming in, Bob.
Bob, thank you very much. Really appreciate your review of everything and your input. And definitely, you know, as we go forward, we'll be looking to tap into your expertise and your knowledge with items such as this as well as others. So thank you again.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we have our next, which is to consider a text amendment- Okay, so we have our next, which is to consider a text amendment to the sign ordinance, Chapter sixty-six, uh, which is revisions to roof sign regulations, and I'm gonna go ahead and give that back to staff.
Thank you. So, um, I'll reiterate some things that we discussed during our last meeting on this item. You're seeing what's in red, where there's current existing language that prohibits roof signs, and then you'll see what's in green that basically gives a go um, for, for somewhat of a roof sign, and so that puts staff in a very sticky position to where is it a yes or is it a no? Um, so you're seeing in red, very clear that roof signs are prohibited, given the definition, um, of what, um, roof signs are. However, when you get to Section sixty-six fifteen, you're finding that building shall, um, extend above the eve line or the top of the parapet wall. Um, parapet as defined in Webster is a low wall at the edge of a platform, roof or bridge. So what that means is that there's typically two types of roof signs that are allowed within the ci- well, not allowed. One is clear on being restricted, which is the one that's shown in black and white, and the one that has a little bit more color is showing to where we're seeing a lot of the signs in the city. Um, we've recently had applicants come into the door and point back to that particular section as they're fully aware that that section allows for them to have the sign that's more to the right. Um, and of course, that gives them the chance to have the signage being seen from a distance, so they're of course gonna choose to assign from the right versus um, a sign that's more so in a monument sign. Um, so we're seeing a lot of those requests. So what staff has proposed, so staff is asking for there to be a definition for a parapet wall, and we've given a proposed language, which is a low protective wall or barrier extending above a roof, balcony or platform as an integral part of a wall that extends above the roof structure of a building. With that, we're asking for sixty-six dash fifteen to have an edit. That edit would have where the portion that says the top of to be removed, so the sentence would read as following: For any building that is primarily used for retail and service commercial, office, institutional or industrial purposes, no part of the wall or building sign shall extend above the eve line or along a parapet on the wall to which it is attached. So basically what that does is it takes away the top of. The top of basically means it's above a parapet. So with that, staff opens the discussion for you to ask me any questions.
Thank you. Go ahead and start to my left. Commissioner Halverson, any questions of staff?
No, I was dissecting your language and I think you, you did well. The, the only, a- and I think you did well to dissolve the one example I was gonna use, which was, um, the concern I would have is that sometimes there's a screen wall for mechanical equipment on top of a roof that could be interpreted as a wall that they could put signage upon. And by saying extension of the wall, um, there's gonna be defined of what, clearly what's the definition of a wall versus an enclosure or screen. So I think you've done that. So other than that, that was my only concern, which you've fixed. So I don't have any other questions or concerns.
Thank you. Commissioner Cris, any questions of staff?
Yeah, uh, do we define eve line? Just out of curiosity, is that defined?
We do not. We had an interesting moment in my office to research eve lines, so it's not in there, of course, by the definition. Um, I will say just for your, uh, I guess confirmation, anything that your zoning ordinance does not define, it tells us to go to the dictionary, uh, the latest version of the dictionary. So that way, we're not going without definition, but we, when we want to be certain, we'll place it inside of the, the actual zoning ordinance.
So how does the dictionary define eve line?
Well, let's see. We had an interesting, fun moment in my office one day, Lauren.
So, you know, I, I don't necessarily think it's, it's extremely relevant today, but I'm a little concerned about the or that's in there. Uh, because it's, you know, it says no part of a wall or building sign shall extend above the eve line or along a parapet on the wall to which it is attached. So if we're trying to separate those two, I almost would ex- would recommend that we say, you know, uh, no part of a wall or building sign shall extend, you know, little I, one, above the eve line or two, along a parapet wall to which it is attached, because I'm a little nervous that we're saying above along a parapet wall, if, if, you know what I'm trying to say there?
Yeah, that's how I read it.
Yeah.
So bullet point one, bullet point two, sort of.
Yes.
Right. And you can change the word eve line to coping.
Say it one more time for me.
Coping.
Coping.
Which is basically the top of the wall, the piece that covers the top of the wall. Sometimes they call it an eve line. Coping is more clear.
It's a new word for me.
You can Google that, too.
As long as it's in the most recent dictionary, we're good.
So Google or shall I say, they're defining it online as the horizontal or lower edge of a roof that extends beyond the exterior wall of a building forming an overhang to protect the wall from rain or sunlight. That's what an eve line is.
Okay.
Would we wanna replace it or would we wanna go ahead and put it in parentheses, coping?
Yeah, I'd put parentheses in there.
Because there may be some people that actually-
Know what that is.
Refer to it as that possibly, yeah. Maybe that's a better way to, to handle it than it covers both.
Okay, so if possible, can we repeat one more time how we wanted to distinctify or change the eve line in parapet wall in your listing?
Well, I'm, I, I'm not sure that we need a lo- a long. I mean, 'cause what we're, what we're try- what we're trying to do is say, right? That it shouldn't be above the roof.
You, you, you could really get rid of the or and you'd be fine, right? 'Cause it's further defining, right?
Above, so extend above the eve line.
Originally, if I may, you suggested that we go with industrial purposes, no part of a wall or building sign shall extend, A, above an eve line, B, along a parapet on the wall to which it is, is attached. Isn't that the simplest way to do that?
See, I think you could simplify that by leaving out on the wall to which it is attached. That one's confusing me about just above the eve line or along a parapet wall.
Yeah, I agree. Genius. I agree with you.
Thoughts? Comments? I'm probably look, looking to my left, Commissioner Halverson, a bit more on that.
If it simplifies it for you to explain it to somebody else, then I'm okay with that. Um, ultimately, if it comes back where it's confused to what our intent is, which is no sign should be projecting above the top of the wall, which is aligned with the coping, um, that's really the intent of this statute, regardless of where it's attached to.
Yeah, and I, I kinda saw it as, okay, so a parapet could be several heights on one building.
Yep.
So what, that language when it says on the wall to which is attached is basically trying to say-
Immediately adjacent to it.
That particular wall can't go any higher than, so I kinda think that it should remain. Um, because again, it gives, as, again, you can have a parapet that's shorter or taller than the other three walls. That's just my opinion.
All right, then how about get rid of a long, just say shall not extend above the eve line or a parapet-
Then we're saying a bu-
Wall to which it is attached.
Right. We, so, 'cause if we go back to the pictures, I think what we're trying to also prohibit is the cafe sign. We're trying to say that needs to be lower. It cannot be along the, the parapet.
Correct.
Yeah.
But, okay, so in, assuming that in that picture, the parapet's two foot high, it could be on that upper wall, but it just needs to be two foot lower?
Yeah, it cannot be along the, the top of the parapet is what we're trying to say.
Okay.
Okay, so can you help me out, Andrew, and how would you articulate?
I thought I had it, but, um, yeah, I mean-
Because as written, the cafe sign would comply.
It will not extend above, yeah, exactly, exactly. Um, 'cause it, 'cause what we're, what we're saying is above, and it's not above, and I think we need to make sure that that second clause doesn't say above, be- because we don't want it to be along the parapet. It's gotta be below the parapet. But now, do we need, do we need to provide how far below, because someone could say, well, it's two centimeters below, it's not along the parapet. So I'm not sure that even if I separate those two clauses out, it, it gives us what we want to do.
There's, there's a way that we could state that the sign must be below the roof. I don't know if I'm saying roof flooring or rooftop, or I don't know how to kinda word that.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but I could explore that more if you would like.
I, I thi- I think that we do need a little bit more here.
That's gonna be difficult.
It is.
Partly because where the structural decking is, for where the actual roof can vary, right? So you don't know where that is gonna be behind the, the vertical wall, right? Number one. Number two, even if you had stuff in front of it, like this has, you know, the, the canopy, if you wanna call it that.
So I have a question. I'm sorry, I thought you were done, Bob.
Oh, okay.
My apologies.
Um, so, so anyway, within that, if you were to say it has to be centered or whatever, um, if the sign is larger than what it could be, you know, by proportion of its height, that's gonna be a challenge, 'cause saying we can't achieve that. So I guess my one question to you is, if we were to achieve the first criteria of one, which was below the coping or the top of the roof, right? The second question is what are you trying to achieve by saying lower than riding along the top? I mean, obviously, that's not aesthetically pleasing, but wha- what are you trying to achieve? Do you want it centered? Do you want it the same, same width as the s-
So, I, I mean, so, so I think there's a good example here in the city of why we're talking about this, right? Uh, the, it, it's, it's the, um, it's the sign, what, what's that facility called across the kitty corner from the avenue?
It's West Park Walk.
West Park Walk, where there is a, a, a retailer that moved from the avenue to West Park Walk and clearly put their sign at the top, along the top of the parapet. And I think that's what we're trying to prohibit going forward here, 'cause it, it, for some reason or another, we have decided as a commissioner, or at least a few of us, have decided that that's unsightly.
Okay, that, well, that was my question. Why is that an issue? If it's below the roof line, it's below the parapet.
It's not, yeah, it's not below the roof.
But if it's below the parapet, it's on the wall.
It is, yes.
Well, then-
But so, so sometimes a parapet isn't the wall, though, and that's the case at that particular facility. The parapet is like way up there, almost on the, on the roof. It's not really the same as the wall, which is very off-putting. It's a little weird. Um, and that's why the signage, some people are allowed to then put the signs way up there, 'cause they're just putting these huge parapets on top of their buildings, and so you could just put a huge parapet on your building and then put the sign at the top of that parapet.
So a parapet is a part of the roof. That's the thing. And if this, if the code is prohibiting roof signs, it's prohibiting a parapet sign. It, it's just-
And my thing was, I don't find that unattractive, but the example you just brought up and, and the reasoning is sound. I, I was just trying to clarify the reasoning behind it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
That's a tough one.
I mean, we, we could just say that, you know, they're not allowed at all on parapets. Why don't we just say that instead? Because then it has to be on the wall, but you have to, to, you have to separate out what is the wall and what's the parapet. And in that example where the cafe is, that's difficult to do.
So I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think for staff, I will tell you, um, our challenge has been that there's a portion of the code that gives us one direction, of course, another that says something slightly different. Um, and I'm under the impression that the conversations have been to prohibit signs on parapet walls. Um, I will tell you in conversations that I've had with a number of companies, I will say it's more the large, big box companies, they're purposely allowing for their walls to be extended very highly above the roof, because that gives them a chance to be seen very far away. That's for advertising purposes. So their design is allowing them to have a roof sign. Um, again, I think staff is just looking for direction to see if the city wants to continue to allow that to happen, because there's a number of roof sign, well, parapet signs in the city that is doing that currently, so.
Yeah, so instead of along a parapet, or it's a one, one above the eve line or two upon a parapet on the wall to which it is attached. I mean, I, if we're just saying a parapet's above the roof, the sign shouldn't be on the parapet. End of story.
Any thoughts, Commissioner Hamner?
No comment. Nothing on this one.
Is that something that we would look to go ahead and, and recommend then, is not to have signs? I mean, that, that's really what it's coming down to, is that do we allow signs or do we not allow signs on, on parapets? I, I think really that's, that's the driving, 'cause roof signs are, are not permitted right off the bat.
Correct.
And if we look at a parapet as possibly an extension of a wall, then it's not part of the roof, it's part of a wall, then do we allow that to be signage on, on parapets? And it has to be a demarcation of this is the actual wall and this is where the, the parapet actually starts. And if it's above the wall, then it's not permitted.
Yeah, and there's a, there's, right now, there's a conflict in the ordinances. We're trying to help staff.
Yeah, exactly.
So it's not even just about whether it's sightly or not, there's also a conflict.
I guess Commissioner Halverson, from, from that standpoint, you know, looking at architectural drawings, I mean, there is a demarcation between the wall and, and a parapet. You know, where, where the roof actually starts and stops.
The parapet's defined as the piece of wall that's above the roof behind it.
Right. So there would be, you would be able to see that on an architectural plan from that standpoint.
The concern I have is, and I'm just thinking out loud, is that it would potentially artificially inflate the size of the building to articulate the sign, to be able to accommodate the ordinance.
To beat the system.
Correct.
A larger roof.
In other words, oh, I can't do that, I'll make the building five feet taller.
And that is what we're seeing.
There you go. So how do we?
There are city ordinances limiting the size of buildings in certain areas, though.
That, as well as the sizing of signs, that's correct. It's just the location of the sign that's causing the conflict.
They don't usually consider signage until well after the building is on its way.
Right.
I mean, as far as a sign permit, I mean, yes, they've probably considered their signage, but they haven't looked into what's permitted usually until a permit is applied for. And I will say, too, this is gonna force, we, we don't usually get architectural plans showing the signage. We get a picture or-
The reason why is-
Just a building facade look, elevation not, does not show the line of the roof, and we're gonna have to start asking for that. And the sign companies are gonna pitch a fit, 'cause they already do.
Not to bore the commission, but typically the way it's done is that we may have a placeholder sign that may say whatever, um, of a certain size proportion, so that works with the rest of the building. The sign is actually done as a third-party delegated design, which we don't do. So a third party comes in, like typically it's a manufacturer, design, build, they would come in, design it, make it, install it. Um, and we don't have anything to do with it, other than making sure there's power and structural holdup. But to answer your question, yes, we can require that says there's gonna be signage in this location and it's gonna be this size and what's its relationship to the parapet as defined by the ordinance.
And, and maybe that's something, and I know we've talked about other items, you know, kind of having them added to the checklist sort of, sort of thing, that, that's kind of required upfront, and this may be another one that needs to be added to that for them to take into consideration a bit earlier in their, in their design. And not, oh, by the way, here's, here's the sign and, you know, we wanna go ahead and put it here. Well, they need to be thinking about that as they're actually designing the building.
Yeah, what, what's interesting from my point of view is that the, the roof line is almost irrelevant, 'cause it can be up and down, you can do, and you don't even see it. I think if we wanna move forward with this language relative to the parapet wall and the, the attachment to it, I would put a footnote, or maybe we don't need to say there's a footnote, that says, you know, there are exceptions and we can review a variance depending upon the, the design, particular design of a building, which may slightly infringe upon that element, um, but it'd be case-by-case basis, but I think in general. Um, but it'd be case-by-case basis, but I think in general.
I, I know that that is one thing that we are telling applicants in advance, that this is not a part of the sign application component, and that will be a separate piece, so they're aware. Um, it's just that when it's time for the application, section sixty-six fifteen is being brought to my attention. So, with that said, it's just, they get it, they understand that the application comes sep- separate, so they're fully aware. It's just that they're aware that there is a section that gives a provision for them.
I mean, m- my suggestion here is that we just say, um, you know, the one extend above the eve line and two upon a parapet wall.
Agreed. Agreed.
We just don't allow it on a parapet wall.
Right.
I agree.
I agree with that. Okay.
And maybe the correct word is nor, not or.
Sure, nor, yeah.
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 Even better.
Right.
I'm not an English major.
No, that's good, yeah.
That's great.
Okay.
So is there any other items that we need to add to this, or, or just that?
No, I mean, I think the, the generals, the main issue that we're you know, holding back from is any signs that project above the, the top of the building. So if we achieve that, that's great, we can
Okay.
Review each individual application from there.
I mean, address the one-offs when they pop up.
That's right.
So what do you, wanna go ahead and make a recommendation, make a motion to make a recommendation?
Yeah, I don't know how to do that.
I move to recommend.
I move to recommend, um, section sixty-six dash three, or, I'm sorry, sixty-six dash one-five. Uh, retail, commercial, office, or industrial. Signage requirements, um, to be approved using the word nor, um, rather than or, is that correct?
Or you can make a motion based on staff's recommendations.
There you go, that, yeah, there you go, we're gonna do that.
I like that better.
Based on, um, recommend to approve based upon staff recommendations, the signage requirements for section sixty-six dash fifteen.
Okay.
Second.
Perfect, okay, so we have a motion to recommend sixty-six fifteen based upon staff's recommendation, and a second, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of recommending sixty-six fifteen with staff recommendation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I don't wanna say the recommendation is approved, because that is not correct, but the recommendation
Passes.
Passes. Thank you. Okay, so our final text amendment is the Consider a Text Amendment to revise Land Use Regulations Cosmetic Tattooing and Microblading, and back to staff again.
Yes, sir, thank you again. Okay, so again, this is an item that was brought before City Council, um, particularly from Fayette County's, um, gosh, slips my mind, um, the Chamber of Commerce, sorry. Um, they requested that the city consider, um, adding language inside of our code that gives the provisions of allowance of um, cosmetic tattooing and microblading. So what has happened, and what typically happens in a particular, um, text amendment, staff reviews the code as it is, identifies what it allows for, for the applicants or property owners to have, and then from there, we identify whether there would be a recommendation, um, to the planning commission or council where there is voting for, against, whatever it may be, so that the language supports the initiative. So here, when first discussing this with the city council, city council requested that we have a language being brought back to them that either recommends from you all to support, or deny that request. So my staff report will show that if you are recommending for this use to go in place, what the use would look like as far as the language. If you're recommending to restrict this use, what the language will look like, and go from there. So they're asking for both languages to come back to them, so that they're able to identify when they're ready to make the decision if it's going to be up or down. So your recommendation is to have the language for, when I say up or down, that means whether they're gonna vote to approve or deny the text amendment, they're wanting to see the language for both. So you're technically supporting that, okay? Okay, so, um, in review, we found that tattoo parlors are mentioned inside of our zoning ordinance. However, it's not defined, it is restricted inside of general commercial as well as property zoned as general commercial. Um, so staff will be noting that, because anytime you're making a text amendment to something similar, we try to stay within that and make changes, so we don't have to come back again for, for more amendments. So, um, second, we have identified where, um, we do identify cosmetic tattooing, microblading, services, and body art, um, inside of the health and sanitation portion of our current code. Um, that is inside of chapter forty-two of the city's code. Uh, we have used that information to put inside of your staff report for the actual definitions. However, it is not allowed in your zoning classifications that would tell staff where the businesses are allowed. It identifies it from a health perspective, where the, um, Fayette County Board of Health would be able to restrict, it gives them room, but it does not give room for a business license to be given based on the zoning classification. So, during our last meeting, it was asked two things to consider, um, during our conversations when it came back to you. It was requested that, because staff had given recommendations for a distance requirement, it was asked, hey, can you take a look to see what other cities are giving distance requirements? And in your staff report, you'll see that those examples were given, other cities or county had given different distance requirements, and so I gave examples to show you how they give distance requirements to restrict the uses from being oversaturated, or to, um, too close together. So is it that they have too many, or is it that they just don't want them so closely together? Either way, I provided a number of cities to you. Um, and then there was a zoning map request, so that it can be seen how close general commercial and light industrial are together. So in that review, I don't know if you can see it there, but I know you have in your staff report, shockingly enough, light industrial is almost adjacent, almost immediately adjacent to general commercial. They touch very closely, so what you're seeing here is fifty-four seventy-four. Um, in that area that's kinda south of that, you'll see the light industrial, where it's touching that alone, um, I always say the name wrong, is it Huddleston?
Huddleston.
Huddleston, um, where it's showing the industrial and general commercial where they touch. I will tell you physically, if you're there, you can't tell if it's industrial, it looks very commercial still. Um, so it gives that, that kinda feel when you're there along that area. And then you'll see here at Crosstown, Highway seventy-four in Bradlin Village, where you're seeing more so along Highway, um, seventy-four, where general commercial and light industrial touch, or it's separated by, um, greenery, but still allowing for those areas to be immediately adjacent to each other. And then last, you'll find this to be on the southern portion where you're seeing, well, no, sorry, the northern portion, where you're seeing Sonora Road and Kedron Village. They're not touching, but you're seeing where light industrial is within the area where there's more residential, but it's still there. Um, near, um, somewhat near general commercial. Okay, so, staff came up with language that would be if it's a permitted use. Um, staff has given suggestive language that you could use if you would like to send it over to the city council. Um, I will say that either way, we need to define, so when you are looking to restrict or permit something, it is very healthy for staff to have a definition. One of the first things that we do as staff, we'll go into the definition, um, because that gives us support in a decision that's being made. So anytime you're looking at a text amendment, if definitions aren't included, we're kinda setting ourselves up not to kinda know how to move forward. So, um, first, tattoo parlors are mentioned already in the code, but we do not define tattoos. So asking to define a tattoo, but again, if we're gonna mention cosmetic tattooing, microblading, as well as body art studios, we're asking to have the language added there as well. Um, you will see that we gave sample language, that same, sample language is coming from Fayette County's, um, Board of Health that is included in your packet that we're currently already using in our code. Then next, you're seeing that staff is recommending, well, not recommending, staff is saying that if you were to place it in a zoning classification, would you want to see it in light industrial? If you're placing in light industrial, would you like to see it as a conditional use? Way the conditional use works is that before they have a full-blown yes, they must go through confirming these things before they're getting approved. So the conditional use is showing that they couldn't be no more than five thousand feet, which is technically a mile, from another use similar to that, and it's identifying how we would measure that. Um, it identifies basically, um, every application, um, basically a survey must be provided as well, so it's confirming our measurement. So it's not being seen as, you know, we're just kinda measuring from guessing, it's basically providing a survey to us. So, um, either way, staff is saying that even if you were to permit this particular use as a conditional use, staff is saying that tattoo parlors are not being touched, I don't believe council asks for us to look at that. So tattoo parlors are still being restricted, um, as it currently is now, inside of general commercial as well as property zoned or rezoned as general commercial. So with that, it's basically looking to see if cosmetic tattooing, microblading, and body art would be considered. And I will add one more thing to this section before the next slide. Again, staff has just identified light industrial, you have the ability to say wherever you desire to give that recommendation for council. So let's say if you would like to see it as non-permitted language, staff again believes that you should define that. Because if you're going to restrict or, or even allow, we must always consider what that language means. Um, so that definition will be there, whether we restrict, whether we recommend to go up or down. Um, and currently, as mentioned, it's currently inside of your general commercial district, as well as your properties zon- rezoned to GC. So staff is saying, and you're seeing here in red, um, just basically adding those three, um, uses to what's currently already in the code. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, open it up for questions, Commissioner Allen?
I have one question, if we can go back to the approval slide.
Yes, sir.
The one where we're considering approval language?
Uh-oh, sorry, I went the wrong way. Okay.
My only question about it is, are they, under E, are they all lumped into one topic? Or are we stating that a cosmetic tattooing parlor has to be a mile away from another cosmetic tattooing parlor, or they all three have to be more than a mile away from each other?
So I would say that if you would like to see them as three separate, to be saying that there's a cosmetic tattoo located in location A, however, a microblading service would like to be located under five thousand miles, and you can say that you're, you're allowing it to have a different provision, as long as it's not near another microblading location. You can say that, or staff is basically placing them all as one use to make it simpler for enforcement.
Thank you.
But that's just my
No, that's all I wanted to
Yes, sir.
Understand your language, thank you.
Commissioner Hamner?
All right, so, couple of questions. So we're saying that light industrial is the district, or the area working, this can be instead of general commercial, uh, correct? Is that correct?
Yes, well, I'm not saying, okay.
Well, I mean, that's what, that's what, the way this is written right now. Do we know why tattooing in general was put, was prohibited in general commercial?
I don't know that answer.
I don't know either, that's why I asked.
More disservice than I know.
Yeah. So, let's talk about the distance requirements, uh, real quick. So the draft ordinance says that there's a five thousand foot separation between the establishments, and that's between one microblading place versus another, correct? So there's kind of like a, a buffer around each one of these. Um, what was the rationale behind the five thousand foot?
Gotcha, so, when looking at the villages, there, the way the villages kinda align, um, you're seeing where if general commercial has industrial nearby, um, just kinda seeing where they're, they're kind of a mile apart. Um, the, the, the idea of putting the distance requirements to avoid saturation. So if we know that each village is at least a mile apart, it's basically saying no more than one per village, pretty much. It's kinda giving that feel for the zoning piece.
Yeah, got it, thank you for that. So, you know, you obviously shared examples of other cities and the, the, the requirements in terms of the distance that others are doing. I found two others, though.
Oh, great.
Uh, just, I wanna add to the list as well. Um, Commerce has a five hundred foot buffer, and as well, very nerdy of me admittedly. I also printed out the ordinance that Fayetteville has, and I gave it to everybody before the meeting on this. Fayetteville has no buffer at all, uh, on that. So, I just wanted to, first of all, just share that there's differences in terms of the municipalities that are actually a little bit less restrictive than the examples that were shared on this, but to stick with Fayetteville for just a moment, sorry, I know I'm making a lot of comments into these questions. Uh, so tattoo parlors, so, so for Fayetteville, they, what's really interesting in their write-up on this is that they tie microblading explicitly to licensed, uh, uh, cosmetologists, and requires Board of Health studio permits before operation. Do, we don't have anything like that in the ordinance that we're proposing, correct?
No, we don't, but I want to say that I reviewed the item that you've given me, this is the exact language we have in chapter forty-two of our code. Um, so we don't, whatever's here, we typically have there, the only provision that's different from this file is that we do not have the section fifty-eight dash ninety-eight that's shown here, and then we basically word differently, section fifty-eight one ele- one zero one enforcement. So, but this language is inside of our code. The challenge is, if there is a challenge, is just that we've given the, the, the Health Department the ability to have an inspection done on this use, but we don't give the allowance of the use. So there's no inspections that will be done, cause the use is not allowed. So it's kind of a, um, this was adopted before the use was adopted, so the city has it in the code. As an allowed use, not allowed use, I'm sorry, it's, I'm sorry, that threw me off a little, I'm sorry. But it's inside of our code, uh, for inspection purposes for the, um, Health Department.
So let me just repeat that back to you real quick.
Go ahead.
So, you're saying that we don't explicitly say this, the same way that Fayetteville does, in terms of the tying the, this to like a, a Board of Health or anything like that, but there's other codes in Peachtree City that kinda do the same thing, is that?
No, what I'm saying is, we have the same exact language, with the exception of the regulation piece.
Mm-hmm.
It's not in there, as well as the enforcement piece is worded differently.
Got it.
But if you go to section forty-two of our, our, um, municipal code, that will show with the definition, the language, operating requirements, all that's listed there. I just think we put, maybe we adopted this a little before we adopted the zoning changes. I don't have the exact date as to when we adopted this from the city.
Sure.
Uh, for the city, I mean, but it's in there in chapter forty-two.
Okay, I think I get it.
Yeah, so it's in there, it's just
It's in a different location.
It's in a different location.
It's in a different chapter, right?
We, we have it.
But it, it, but the effect is kind of the same as what Fayetteville is, they're just sort of doing it different, or like saying it differently.
Correct, cause I don't believe this is in their zoning code, this is in their Health Department, just as it is with ours. We're trying to place it in our zoning code.
Got it.
Regulate for zoning purp- purpose, for the land use.
That makes sense.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
No problem.
Those are my questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Chris?
So when you say that, that a lot of this language from Fayetteville is in our zoning code, are you talking about, I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Yes, I'm okay.
Article five, um, of chapter forty-two, so body art studios and body artists?
So, so chapter forty-two is not in our zoning code?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, sorry.
It's okay, it's okay.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, keep going.
Uh-huh, it's in chapter forty-two, which is in our municipal code, but not inside of our zoning code. So what we've done is, and this, so that can be, um, clear, this is something that Fayette County gave to all of its municipalities to adopt. So this is not language that Fayetteville came about, or Peachtree came about, this is something that was provided by the county's Health Department.
Article five of forty-two?
Yes, correct.
Okay, got it. So, so what's, what's not there, though, Ken, just so you know, is, is the requirement that, uh, that you pointed out, that they have the appropriate, um, licensing for microblading. There is a requirement there in forty-two about the body art licensing, but not this cosmetology studio.
So if I can clear, clear that up?
Yeah, please do.
So, without the land use piece, they can't have a need for forty-two.
Yes, agree.
So forty-two has no use for us right now, because there's
It's not allowed.
Correct.
It's prohibited.
Correct.
Tattoo parlors are prohibited by our zoning ordinance.
That's correct. The only mentioning of something similar to cosmetic tattooing and microblading is the tattoo parlors. That's mentioned as a restriction within our zoning code, but the allowance or restriction for cosmetic tattooing and microblading, body art, so be it, that's not mentioned inside of our zoning code. So those items are not allowed to have a business license, or those uses are not allowed to have a business license. So it's kinda making it where forty-two basically counts silent.
I see, so it's forty-two's there, but it's just not allowed, because of the zoning restrictions that we have in place.
I think the city went along with adopting what the county was recommending for the municipalities to adopt. I can't speak for certain, cause I wasn't here during that time, but that's just what it appears to look like, cause the language is almost identical. it appears to look like, because the language is almost identical in the county, Fayetteville, and Peachtree City.
Yeah. So I mean, if, if, if we did adopt something, or if we recommended to city council to adopt something, I think Ken brought up a astute point here, is that we would want to make sure that these people have the appropriate, um, permits from the Board of Health, uh, to do what they're proposing to do. Um, so that, that may be another conversation for city council to-
Well, and that's what I was going to say, does that need to go into this text ordinance, text amendment, or should that go back in a review of section forty-two?
So forty-two is already there. So it allows for the health department to regulate as they wish, it's their language. So it just doesn't allow for the use to be there for the, you know?
That would all be contained in forty-two then?
Yeah, yeah, so yeah, they, they can look at that later, that's fine. Um, okay, so let's move on. Sorry.
Good, very good question. Commissioner Halverson, any questions?
I'm not sure my, my comment or question is going to be appropriate for Peachtree City just because there's so few locations, um, that it could actually happen. But if, depending upon the language, my question is more to staff about if you were to review and use this language. And two different establishments, we're trying, you're trying to establish the five thousand feet distance, right? And as it's written, it's to the parcel, the closest edges of each parcel, right? Not to the front door of the building, not to, it, it's to the parcel. Um, if you would have something like the avenue, is the entire property that leases out different establishments, technically it's one parcel with different leases, correct?
That's correct. And it would be to the parcel.
Therefore, it would be to the parcel.
Correct.
And, okay, I just wanted to clarify that that was your intention, because I could see someone saying, well, you know, the parcel itself is a mile, right? Um, so theoretically, if two people were trying to have the same thing in the same parcel, but they were, they were using a different language, or interpretation of what it was. And so, um, anyway, that was my question, so thank you for the clarification.
That's a good question, yeah, very good.
Any, any comments or any other questions?
I would just say, the, the five thousand feet seems excessive. I think your rationale makes sense at the same time, uh, for it. Um, you know, again, it's interesting that this is not allowed in G C. I'm sure there was a decision made a long time ago about that, that, again, we just don't know the rationale behind it. But, um, I do see cosmetic tattooing being different than regular tattooing, to lump them in together is, I mean, obviously, there, there could be varying opinions on it, but it, it seems like there's, it's tattooing admittedly, but still, there, the, the intent behind it seems to be different on it.
So I think here, you're seeing where council is considering not lumping them together. For example, tattoo parlors are still being restricted, but they're given an opportunity for the discussion to be had as to whether cosmetic tattooing should be considered. And as you know, cosmetic tattooing could be where someone's looking to have a permanent eyebrow arch, or fill in a eyebrow, or mustache, beard, whatever you name it.
Lip liners.
Yes, lip liner, eyeliner, you name it.
I think I'd be interested to see this treated similar to like other sort of like cosmetic businesses.
Okay.
Again, there's, admittedly, this is different than, you know, going to get some body lotion or whatever, you know? But, uh, it's, the intent behind this is just so different from what, you know, like getting a tri-well tattoo or something like that. So, I don't know, it, it, obviously, there would be greater discussions around this, but again, I think that this could warrant maybe a greater discussion whether or not this truly belongs in limited industrial or not.
And again, I think if you were to say you would like to see it somewhere else, staff just gave a suggestion, um, to, to allow for you to be as open or as closed as you desire to be. Um, it may be where you may say you want to see it be a little bit more allowable or less allowable. Staff is just giving an option-
Sure.
Yeah, that you could consider to either make it more restrictive or less.
Yeah. What do you guys think?
I mean, I, I think there's some legitimate need from the community because we have seen, I think, uh, other establishments in our general commercial districts doing these services, and it's not being regulated. So, you know, I think there's a legitimate need from the community, and so I, I would support, uh, seeing us allowing this specifically in certain areas. I think, you know, body art and tattooing are different from cosmetic tattooing and microblading, but it just depends on what the appetite is.
I, I think from that standpoint, as of right now, we don't allow anything. You know, from, from, whether it's, whether it's tattooing or microblading or anything, and of course, we're not changing the, the tattoo part of that, that's still, still not permitted. But opening it up at least in light industrial, um, you know, gives an opportunity for, you know, businesses to go ahead and, and bring that to, to the city. Um, you know, if we start putting it in, in G C, you know, is that opening it up for more establishments because there's more general commercial as compared to light industrial? I guess would be a, a question.
Yeah, I think that's why we see the proposal here as light industrial, because this is not, it's not going to be as many.
I mean, the recommendation to, to staff, to council, could be for staff, for council to consider expanding that to general commercial. They, they could, of course, do that on their own, but I mean-
Sure.
We could make that recommendation to, for, for council to take a look at, in addition to light industrial, allowing it for, if, if they want, allowing it for G C.
I like the distance piece. Uh, having actually gotten a tattoo in Peachtree City, you know, I'm not against tattoos, but I am concerned when you start getting the, the strip malls that have five nail salons and three tattoo places, and, and it just comes overwhelming. One, two, I left Henry County and moved to Peachtree City because they, we had a nice neighborhood, they put in a tattoo parlor, the next thing they did was put in a massage parlor that was only open from five P M. to four A M. So it wasn't your typical, you know, therapy, and that we started having crime in the area. The neighborhoods went down like overnight within a year. And so I'd like to keep the, keep the establishments limited, of my own opinion.
Yeah. Sorry, you mentioned massage parlors, so I know that we do have, obviously, very specific rules in Peachtree City about that, and, uh, you know, that's in general commercial as well, not to pick on your point. But again, it's almost, again, like, is this, is this being treated fairly in, in, or is it being stigmatized because, again, it's tattooing around it? I don't know. I, I don't know the answer to it, but I'm, I'm, I'm hesitant to be like, to, to fully support something like this that seems so restrictive when it's, it's, it is different than what traditional tattooing is.
Well, and I was, my point was tattooing, but it was also to the point of-
Sure.
Uh, an influx of all these small businesses, even if they're all above board and awesome, just a swarm of these as opposed to clothes stores and-
Sure.
Ice cream shops.
And, and it's not quite the same scenario, um, and, and I wouldn't expect it to be, but I think one of the things you, you may have noticed in, in Fayetteville, um, was, you know, the allowance of, of liquor stores. Uh, you know, Fayetteville didn't allow any, any liquor stores within city limits for, forever. Um, and now, you know, there, there are some serious concerns that almost on every corner within a certain distance, there's, there's now a liquor store. Um, so I, I don't see that as the same situation.
Right.
Um, but it's one of those as to, you know, do we as Peachtree City want to see, you know, even though it is not the same as tattoos, you know, something like that?
Yeah, I think it comes down to, again, like, how do we view microblading? Is it cosmetic service, or is it tattooing and something else that'll bring other elements associated with it? I think that that, defining that will really give the answer behind it. I'm leaning towards more the cosmetic side of it, because again, it, it's a, it's a, supposed to be a cosmetic, uh, service around it, but I think you, there's an equally valid argument against that as well.
Well, and let me remove my, you referred to other elements, let me remove that piece from, from my original statement, and just, the, the, I'm trying to think of the word I want, the saturation-
Sure.
-is what my biggest concern is. Not that we have these businesses, but that we become oversaturated with them. So if we kept the five thousand feet and kept them lumped in, I think that prevents that.
I'm actually curious, my staff, um, if you were to do an analysis of the areas as is written, that it's permitted, and apply the five thousand feet rule to parcel, how many part, how many businesses could be possible in Peachtree City? Because the reason I'm asking the question is that theoretically, we could be writing a, um, statement, amendment, to theoretically eliminate it just by geography.
Understood. So when, um, we had our last meeting, when, um, the commissioner mentioned that he wanted to see a map that gave the distances, I took it upon myself to measure, to see how far of distance from the furthest parcel. Um, yes, you will see that from the furthest parcel, at least a mile, there isn't allowance for no more than maybe one within that village, particularly the largest one that would possibly, depending on if it's the furthest, I'm going the wrong way, I am. If it's allowed from the furthest parcel, kind of shown there in the purple, it measures about a mile here, to like the last parcel there. So that mile from the furthest, what is that going to be, north, what is it, westish to far southeastish, if that's making sense? That allows for possibly one on each of those corners, if it's measured properly, but that's the only one that it does to that extent. The others, you'll see where it kind of kicks it out exactly at a mile.
So the total number for Peachtree City potentially would be three?
Possibly, yes.
I'm not concerned about saturation, as written. I'm just reacting to-
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
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 Yeah, okay.
A solid point, Robert.
Well, do we have a, uh, motion for recommendation? And, and as you said, we need to make a recommendation for-
Future spots.
Both.
Yes, so your recommendation would be if you're comfortable seeing the language this way, or this way, you would recommend that they both go to council, so that if council is leaning either way, the language is prepared for them to make that decision.
Sure. We have anyone that would like to make a motion of recommendation?
I move that, uh, we recommend to city council to consider a text amendment to revise land use regulations for cosmetic tattooing and microblading as recommended by staff.
A second.
So we have a recommendation to send the city council based upon staff's, um, input with what they presented, and a second, any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor with recommending as submitted by staff, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Recommendation with staff's input has passed. Okay, very good.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. There we go, sorry.
Okay, twenty-second, perfect. And, and I, I want to thank everyone, text amendments are not the easiest, um, you know, to go through, even though sometimes it seems like there's just a simple wording change or, or just an addition, um, there's always something else that's connected with it, and I think we had really good discussion, um, really good input from, from Bob, really appreciate his time coming this evening. Uh, you know, we have a little bit more on, on that to do, and, and I think that's good. Um, and appreciate Commissioner Hamner for, for taking that upon himself to, to provide that. Anything else from, from the commissioners this evening? Anything else from staff?
Um, yes, sir, I would love to discuss, um, training. Um, I can tell you that Commissioner Allen has been quietly amazing, um, because he hasn't had the discussion with us yet, and he hasn't pushed, um, but I would love to have that training with you once the additional members onboard. Um, I believe October first starts that seat, so if you're comfortable with us waiting until they're onboard, I would love to have a conversation or training with you both.
Could you give me a call tomorrow?
Of course.
And then, because I'll, I, I still work like most everybody else, and I'll be able to look at my schedule and see when I'm available.
Okay, okay. So I will say that it's probably best that I wait until that seats field, so I can work with you both on a schedule.
No, really?
But I would love to give that, um, opportunity for us to have that discussion. I believe we enjoyed the one that we had, um, with our pad, well, I don't want to call you Robert, but Commissioner Halverson? Um, we had a great conversation, great training, I think that we enjoyed the conversation. I think it'd be great if you could, you know, have that same opportunity. That's all.
Sure, thank you.
And, and I think another thing on training, too, um, you know, we do have the, uh, the zoning, the planning and zoning training. Um, I don't know if there's another one oh one coming up, I know the one oh two is in December, if I remember correctly. Those are, those are excellent for, for those who haven't had, I, I had the one on one oh one, um, excellent, excellent, you know, training class, um, and I'm looking to hopefully, you know, do the one oh two.
Okay.
But yeah, they're, they're really good if we're able to, to get somebody or somebodies into those.
We budget for it, so, yes, it's available. It's a great course.
It is.
I've taken all the way up to one oh four, so it's pretty cool.
Good. Okay, if there is nothing else, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion to adjourn and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
All right. This was good.